That was a long wait.
Hey, there's a cup right there. Sit still.
Don't tell him that, Jim.
Jim's been on it tonight, I'm telling you.
Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty P M on January twenty first two thousand twenty-three time for our second regular meeting of the month. At this time, Mr. Blair will give us our invocation and I get to leave the pledge, so let's stand.
Let us pray. Jesus, you were born in a little town. You grew up under the authority of local leaders and officials who manage the majority of your daily life. We lift up our local leaders today. We pray for our city manager, city council, county commissioners, police chief, judges, and all who serve our local communities. Strengthen them with wisdom and grace for the heavy burdens they carry. May they manage their teams and projects with love. Keep their hearts pure and their eyes turn towards your face as they work in the best interest of the people they are called to serve in your name. Amen.
Amen. You'll join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Blair?
Yes, sir.
Roll call, Kelly.
Schultz?
Yeah, here.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Here.
Hawke?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lynch?
Here. We have two sets of minutes, the first from our regular meeting on February eighth, two thousand twenty-three. So we'll start with that. Did anybody see any changes that needed to be made? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Second.
And roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Next, we have our special meeting the next day on February ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Does anybody see anything that needed to be changed there? And if not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept these minutes as printed.
I'll second that.
And roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Communications, Mr. Denon?
None.
Service, Safety and Recreation Report. I guess it was Valentine's Day or something. We got a pink report there. Ted, you're up.
He always gets the wrong one. Did you ever notice that?
The Service, Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, February eighth, six P M. Ted Hock presided and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Jeff Benary, police chief, Mr. Tim Downing, fire chief, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, Mr. Ron Sockman, service director, Mr. Joe Denon, city manager, Mr. Sean Remington, and other representatives of the Triangle Trail Group. Number one, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Fire Department. Chief Downing reported that the truck purchase was progressing. Number two, Chief Downing noted that he and the assistant fire chief had attended a two-day learning seminar. Chief Downing continued and noted that his staff, along with the police chief, would be completing an upcoming N M I S, or rather, National Incident Management System training course. Number three, Chief Downing noted that applications were being accepted for the administrative assistant position. Number four, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Police Department. Number five, Chief Benary noted that applications were being accepted for two open patrol positions. Chief Benary noted that an assertive effort would be made to actively recruit more candidates for the position. Number six, the committee benefited from an update regarding the reconciliation progress. Number seven, the administration advised the committee that invitations had been emailed regarding the Honda groundbreaking event. Number eight, the committee benefited from a review of economic census statistics. Number nine, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Service Department. Mr. Christman and Ms. Hernandez had moved that the administration be granted permission to bid for the street and alley paving project. The committee recommended that the administration proceed with the paving list summary as provided, noting that it was subject to change if a condition arises. Number ten, the committee noted the hiring of Ms. Katie Casper at the water plant. Number eleven, the administration advised the committee of the status of the Court Street paving and railroad crossing project. The administration noted the benefits of the precast concrete crossings over traditional rail crossings construction. The committee recommended that the administration proceed with the replacement of railroad crossing on Court Street with the upgraded railroad crossing. Number twelve, the administration noted an inquiry from a citizen regarding a sound barrier along State Route thirty-five. Thirteen, the committee benefited from an update regarding the bike trail. The committee noted that the trail survey was almost complete and that bids would be requested for the location. Number fourteen, Mr. Hawke requested that the committee have an executive session. Mr. Johnson moved and Ms. Hernandez seconded the motion to move into executive session for the purpose to discuss personnel matters. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hock, Chairperson, Service, Safety and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly Ford, Recording Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Hawke. Are there any questions about that?
I'll move that we accept the minutes from the Service, Safety and Recreation Committee on February eighth.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Next, we have reports of our city officials, starting with Mr. Denon.
I'd like to remind everybody again about the natural gas rate. We've been able to fix the natural gas rate commencing in April of two thousand twenty-three, the period being April two thousand twenty-three through October two thousand twenty-four. At zero point six one six nine per cubic foot, there's a copy of the notice that'll be mailed to residents. If you are already participating in the natural gas aggregation, you get the letter. To continue to participate, you don't have to do anything, okay? If you have any questions, you can always contact I G S Energy at the one eight seven seven number that's listed in the letter, or you can call me uptown and we will see what the issue is and take care of that for you. But again, if you participate now and you get the letter, you don't have to do anything. Would like to thank the street department for their work in Washington Park. We're incredibly pleased with that work around the pond. Remind everybody of the special meeting tomorrow, the purpose being to move along the resolution that you have concerning ODOT and Court Street. The Court Street resurfacing and repair work is a cooperative project with ODOT, where we pay a portion of it, ODOT pays a portion of it, and ODOT requested a slightly different piece of legislation. So tomorrow, we need to remember that we need to get together to get that done. It'll have to be a very short meeting. And spring appears to be gaining ground over winter, which I am thrilled about. The days are getting a little bit longer and the general trend is a little bit warmer, although we got a cold day coming up after a warm day. But we're definitely headed in the direction of springs along the way, and that is something that is thrilling us to know when. And the weather of late has allowed us to do a lot of, I'll start a lot of outdoor projects early. We've gotten a lot done this February and we hope to be able to continue to do that. If things don't get muddy, soppy, where we tear up more stuff, then we make progress with it. You'll continue to see us progress with a lot of the outdoor work.
We're talking nine thirty tomorrow morning, correct?
Yes, nine thirty.
And Mark's fired up to start mowing grass.
Ready to go. Ready to go.
The work is ready for me.
And bringing, springing of, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm expecting a phone call at nine twenty in the mornings. I won't be here tomorrow. I'm sure you'll have a call from those.
Yeah, very good. Anything else?
Yeah, I feel like there's cold air blowing on my head. Is there, is it, is it, is it springing up to have the air conditioner on?
That's what we call heat in this building.
I do feel it.
I do feel the air. It's part of our new echo-friendly program where we don't actually have you.
I got kind of a hot head anyway, but.
Anyway, Christina, you're up now that you've controlled the heat, air, whatever it is.
I do it all. Okay, so proud to, happy to say that our balance in our general fund at this time is just under one point five million dollars. And in January, we had gains on all of our investments. So we have three different investments, so altogether, there's a total of about twenty-five thousand dollar gain in January. And then I also wanted to remind everyone that you can now file your city income taxes online. It's a little convoluted to get there, so if you go to our city website and then click on the top that says Governments, and then look in their Departments and then Tax, you can go in there. We're working with our I T person to try and get it maybe on the main page instead of having to go through, click three or four different places to get there. But we're working on that. It's a little slow starting because it's the first year, which we expected, but I think it hopefully will pick up this year and even more next year. So I don't, if anyone has any questions or...
Explain the JED. You say we finally got our first payments from the...
Oh, we've been receiving money from, yeah, from McKesson and the Joint Economic Development District. If you want a really good, really good explanation, Joe might be able to explain a little better than I can.
Yeah, because somebody was, my wife brought it up today. She does taxes and somebody that worked at McKesson brought theirs in and he was confused about why they were taking it out.
Oh, okay.
The township, in this case, it's Jefferson Township, doesn't have the legal ability to levy an income tax like the city does. So what is occurring there is that the city in Jefferson Township arrived at an agreement for a specific geographic area that includes McKesson, that you create a special joint economic development district and then the revenues are divided between the City of Washington Courthouse and Jefferson Township. And we process, we process the income taxes and collect them on behalf of the township and then pay a proportion of them to the township. And that allows the township to develop infrastructure out there and to create the environment that helps support the development of that for industrial purposes. And there's a separate JED with slightly different terms for Honda. But that is how that works and it's just an economic development tool. And we were very pleased to be able to cooperate with Jefferson Township. And the township has shown an enormous amount of leadership on the subject and we've been very happy with it.
And they have their own funds, so it's not getting all co-mingled with all our other revenues, so we keep track of it.
Very good, okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, have you got anything this evening?
I have nothing.
Okay, well, we haven't started mowing yet, so.
No, we stopped mowing.
Yeah. Okay, we have one resident who wishes to speak to us this evening. Della, you know the routine if you want to come up.
Good evening. My name is Della Kestner Key. I live at one three one one Farmington Lane, Washington Courthouse. I, at one of the meetings that we were at, I had had gotten a hold of the state of Ohio regarding the sound barrier issue that I had kind of mentioned before. And I had given at that meeting, it was a planning commission meeting, I believe. Is that what it was, Joe? And I had given Joe and Dale Lynch a copy of what I had emailed back and forth with the state. And I also had, because I have Mr. Blair's email address, I was able to copy him with the stuff and he got some of the stuff. I do have the second half of that.
It's just a pen, I'll get it.
I do have my, some of my follow-up with that, another gentleman, and I did not copy that to you. But I do have that here if you want that. I have about three of the ones that I've given to Mr. Denon and Mr. Lynch and Mr. Blair, so if anybody else wants to see what I had done so far. What I am asking, and I, like I said, they did send me a follow-up. I am feeling now, I'm at the point where I now could use your all's help to take it from here. And they gave me some suggestions. They're feeling like, and I understand, they're saying that my house was not built when they came in and put thirty-five in, and that's very true. But that neighborhood was there. And so my question's to them, and they never did answer my question. And that's where part of what I would like your help and support in is that when they did their sound analysis, they said they did a sound analysis, but I asked them what time of year that they did the sound analysis. Because if they did it before the crops were harvested, then the cornfields will block that sound, that will be a sound barrier for them. And I don't know if they did or didn't. And they never would ever really answer that question for me. And so I think now they're just thinking that I'm just a disgruntled community person. But that community was there before the highway was there. And so I, they gave me some suggestions. They suggested to get the, for us to get the big, big hay things, the big hay, round hay things?
Bales, they had hay bales.
The big hay bales, and, but I see that to be a fire hazard when that gets dried out. And, yeah, so anyway, so I'm asking for your all's help from here on in. If you would like what I've got so far, I'll be happy to share. I've only got three of the one and I've got five of this other, this, the follow-up of it, if you all would like that.
If you want, we can take what Della has and put a copy in everybody's box.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we can get that to you.
Okay, well, I've got, these you all can have. There's three of the one that I gave you before, and then here's five of this, so, yeah. So I would appreciate if there's some kind of support. Mr. Blair was kind enough to come out to our house and he and my husband walked the hill. And he said the minute he got out of the car, he could tell in our driveway out how noisy it was. And it's a huge difference. It's just a huge difference. And I'm sure we're not the only ones. I have not taken a survey in our neighborhood yet, but I'm sure everyone that will be on that side will probably have the same problem.
Joe, you've surveyed neighborhoods before.
We've thought about Della's concern and I did a little bit of informal poking about. I would guess ODOT's position will be that Della's neighborhood wasn't there when we built the highway. They might be unclear about when they did a sound analysis because when the highway was originally built, I don't know if you had to do stuff like that back then. Because they're going to claim that, you know, thirty-five far predated that neighborhood.
No, but just to be clear, Della's claiming that the neighborhood was there, but that it was just her house that wasn't there.
It's the newer houses.
Say that the neighborhood wasn't there when thirty-five was built.
Well, you would be able to get, someone would be able to figure that out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And how much of that neighborhood would be, would be there. And I, and I made that very clear in my emails to them that I understood that my house had not been there, but that that neighborhood had been there.
And we thought about potentially some different ways to address the noise concern, even if ODOT was not helpful.
Their suggestion was bales of hay?
Yeah, yeah, as a matter of fact, I have it in that.
What was the idea of that? I don't know who came up with that one.
I, I have no idea, but they did.
Have a huge wall of bales.
Well, and they show that. That's exactly what they show. Yeah, I have that there, yeah. It's, it's in the ones that are marked six. The page will have a six.
That is crazy, that somebody from the state of Ohio would suggest.
If you'll look here, yeah, they show them there.
He's trying to say, hey.
Yeah, they show them there.
I don't know what they were thinking.
Yeah, I thought that was really interesting, yeah.
Yeah, that's not practical either because they're, well, they're going to develop that whole area there.
Sure.
So it's a temporary, vast fix while they build these other units.
And I get their, their, I get what they were saying is that, and I was not trying to pull the wool over their eyes by any means. I was very direct and very open. And I said, I understand my home was not there, but that neighborhood was there before thirty-five was put in.
Yeah, we can check on, the one side of Quail Run was there earlier than the other side of Quail Run, the side where there's the sidewalks and things. Anyway, we can check on.
And, and they also said too, and I think Mr. Blair and my husband discovered too, that they said anybody that I think is outside of the two hundred feet, it's not, a barrier wall is, a sound barrier wall is not going to affect them. I find that hard to believe because I'm pretty sure our neighbors across from us and down Greensview are definitely hearing what we're hearing. It's pretty open now from the trees all being taken down.
Do you know of anyone who owns a house who, who you know the house was there whenever thirty-five was built? Because if that's going to be their sticking point, it sounds like all you got to do is talk to the neighbor and try to figure out.
Anybody down by Dr. Martin's house, Doug Martin's house?
Okay.
Anybody down from that towards forty-one? I think we can safely say that they were there before thirty-five came in.
Joe, maybe you want to ask around to the residents there and see if you can find someone who fits the criteria of ODOT?
Oh, we could look into that, yeah.
We know a family from the county taxes.
Well, yeah, you can, yeah.
My neighbor across the street, Gary Schaefer, I think his house was maybe the very first one built on Farmington. I think, I can't, I might be wrong.
And I think you're correct on that.
And I'll go across the street tomorrow and knock on his door and say, were you guys here when thirty-five was here or did it come in after?
Yeah.
And I think his house was the first one.
Yeah, your construction's going to be on the text, but.
Yeah.
My thing is, it doesn't make any difference whether the houses that were there or not when thirty-five, they are there now and thirty-five's creating noise.
It is.
So that's, I mean, I think it's irrelevant that whether the houses were there or not.
I, you're preaching to the choir. I agree with you.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you one hundred percent. I do understand that a barrier wall is not going to be cheap and it's going to be costly, and they don't want to put it in.
Well, that's of course true.
Yeah, and that's what it is, and that's why they're fighting me.
They're going to fight every inch of the way until they're forced to put it up.
But I am willing to do, I mean, if I need to have some kind of petition signed, I am willing to do that. I'm sure my neighbors will be willing to support that as well.
I'm surprised the people that live there at Trotter's Point, there's condos and things right there, that, they don't complain about that because it's been noisy there forever.
They, they said that they tried and they came across, they came up with what I came across. So they stopped it right there because theirs did go in. That, that area was not there. That area was all cornfield when we built our home. That's why I asked when the noise analysis was done and.
What year it was done would be a good thing to find out, not what time of year, but what year was it done?
Oh, that's, I think they said it was done in two thousand?
Oh, well, then there was houses there then, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah, ours was not. Ours was not built until two thousand two, and I said, I acknowledge that.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, I agree with you. It shouldn't matter. It's still a community.
To me, it doesn't matter one way or the other.
Now it's noise. It's deafening.
Because you're not with them there.
That's true. This is true.
Trying to budget, you know?
Yes, this is true.
Trying to budget when things are going up, prices of things are going up and everything costs. So I, I get it and I understand it. But I also thought their ideas of the bales of hay or the rolls of hay was.
That is the craziest thing I've ever heard of.
Because right away, I'm not, I, I'm not a farm girl. I grew up in this city and my thing was, is that, I'm not a farm girl, but don't, can't they catch on fire if they dry out too much or something? I, you know?
It's just a crazy idea I've ever heard.
So, anyway.
Like filling sandbags and putting them out there.
Yeah, 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 but thank you all. Any support, please let me, please help me with this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We are ready for legislation. And the legislation that's been previously introduced starts with Resolution Number R seven, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move that we place Resolution Number R seven, twenty twenty-three on the second reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution Number R seven dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Reichardt Ford for the purchase of two two thousand twenty-three Ford F one fifty pickup trucks.
Move for adoption.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. And Resolution Number R eight, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move we put Resolution R eight, twenty twenty-three on second reading.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution Number R eight dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Reichardt Ford for the purchase of two two thousand twenty-three Ford F two fifty pickup trucks.
Move for adoption.
Yes, I'll second that.
Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Next is Resolution R nine, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move that we place Resolution Number R nine, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
Second. Discussion.
Is there a big need for a six-passenger pickup truck?
Well, the one reason why we picked out one of these is in particular when we have people from out of town and we have to show them infrastructure and sometimes drive a little bit off. drive a little bit off-road, that we have a vehicle that we can put them in. Uh, that's why it would be handy to have one where we could put several people in. Cause a lot of times we, we take them out into a field and et cetera. It would be nice in particular when we show people the industrial park, if we had a, a truck that we could, it could do double duty as it's a regular work truck, but we can put more people in it.
Is it four-wheel drive?
I believe it is.
As I recall, we took my four-door pickup down along railroad tracks about the trail.
Yeah.
Cause we had four or five people in it or maybe, I doubt we had six, but probably four or five. So they're pretty handy.
Anything else? Roll call, Kelly.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution Number R nine dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Reichardt Ford for the purchase of two thousand twenty-three Ford F one fifty super crew pickup, super crew pickup truck.
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Maybe we can get into Reichard commercial now, Ted. We're dealing.
We're dealing.
Okay. New legislation in writing, starting with res- and only one, Resolution Number R eleven, twenty twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move, we place Resolution Number R eleven, twenty twenty-three on first reading.
I'll second that. Whoever else can do it.
You can give us to whomever. Um, discussion. Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution Number R eleven dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, City Manager, to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio, referencing Westport Street, US Route twenty-two, PID number one one two seven nine six, Farmington.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, we are ready for miscellaneous. Mr. Christman, you got anything this evening?
No, I was wanting to get out of here so I could go buy the materials to build my chicken coop.
Oh, brother. Mr. Hawk, what do you got?
He's got his V twelve.
Excuse me. Well, I was, I've really been encouraged about what's been happening at my old college where I graduated from down at Asbury in Willmore, Kentucky. And uh, it's, it's just such a real genuine uh attitude among college students that it's uh wholesome and it's good, I think. Not, not negative. It's just praising the Lord and worshiping. And I, I think it's great. That's all.
Mr. Blair?
Uh, yes. Uh, the other evening, my wife and I attended the uh courthouse Board of Education meeting to learn about the joint venture with University of Cincinnati with the emphasis, emphasis on technology. A very positive step for the city. And uh, I really want to commend those that were involved in getting this all to take place. Sure took a lot of time and it sure looks like a very positive move. They said that the courthouse is one of five in the whole state that is actually a part of this program. So it's a real, real plus. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I, I would just advise that you don't build your chicken coop out of hay bales.
Think you're probably right.
Yeah. I don't know where the Department of Transportation bought the hay bales.
That's a good one.
Proper means of infrastructure, but.
Straw would be better because the chickens eat the hay, but they won't eat the straw probably.
Yeah, or it's just a faster way to get roasted chicken if they're that flammable. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hernan, I wish I could say it like Ted says it. But anyway, Ms. Hernandez, what have you got?
Um, two things. I want to wash the blue, wish the Blue Lions good luck tomorrow. I'm.
And the Panthers play tomorrow too.
Yes, but Blue Lions hold a, hold a stake in this big time. Um, and then um, second thing is I just want to, it's a little early, but I'm gonna remind you that March tenth is the next shop hop, Shenanigans and Shamrocks and Shenanigans. So, Mr. Pitstick is ready with his green. I want the rest of everyone ready for their green. Um, so it's, we've got a busy year with um downtown Main Street Fayette and I'm excited about it. Great crew working on it. So I need support and that means you come to the events for me. So that to you as coun- uh council members and also to the public.
Thank you, Kendra. Mr. Schultz?
Well, you know, earlier Sean and I was talking, we were sitting down there talking and I said that it would be exciting if I like to be about twenty years younger because a lot of things coming to Fayette County, Washington Courthouse is extremely exciting. Uh, the things coming in the future and uh, some things could be good, some things could be bad. You know, we won't be building stuff out of straw, bales of straw. I don't know why that would even come up. I don't know why whoever come up with that crazy idea. But it's exciting to know things like that, you know, and if, and to be in business in Fayette County or in Washington Courthouse, there is gonna be growth and we know there's gonna be growth. And there's gonna be some growing pains that go with that growth. So we will have to work through that as time goes on, so. But it is kind of exciting, the things that are coming to Fayette County and Washington Courthouse. Thank you very much.
I think it's just beginning too.
Yes, it's just beginning.
Uh, just a couple of things. One more reminder, nine thirty in the morning, we'll meet to hopefully pass this resolution. And I would also say I want to thank everybody on council and Kelly and Joe and everybody for making a switch in our night of council meeting. That was mostly at my request because of the basketball game that Kendra mentioned. But anyway, I really appreciate that. I especially appreciate Kendra who's here, but didn't think she was gonna be here. And I appreciate her saying, oh, it's okay, go ahead. And uh, that was nice. I appreciate it. So, anyway, uh, tomorrow begins Lent. And that's pretty late time of year. So anyway, um, that, with that, if somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn.
You know, I want to thank the, the lady that made the cupcakes. People forgot all about that.
Really pretty.
Somebody did a fantastic job on these cupcakes.
Yes.
So, yeah.
And, and good.
I ain't eat mine yet. I'm still looking at it. The chicken keeps smiling at me. It's hard for me to eat them.
I'll move for adjournment.
Thank you. Second. Okay, roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes, we are adjourned at eight oh nine or something like that.